Okay, let's rise and pledge to the flag. Okay, let's see. Twenty twenty five budget, ambulance fund.
My assignment from the last meeting by the board was to see if I could mitigate the increase in the ambulance fund and offset it with a decrease in the refuse fund. What I did was a little bit of both. I revised the ambulance fund to soften the increase just slightly. You may recall the first budget, draft budget, which is the second page of this tab, had an increase to point three five. I softened that increase to point three four, which only leaves the funds for the first three quarters into twenty twenty five, end of year twenty twenty five, three thousand dollars short, which revenue were the first three months of twenty twenty six, and I consider that a de minimis. So unless you have any other questions, I don't plan, I do not plan on speaking any further about the ambulance fund.
You're right to make the motion to accept the ambulance increase, the ambulance fund.
My recommendation would be to hold that thought, so we have all the millages at the end of the budget. But I do not think I can mitigate that mileage any further because of the agreement with powers rec. I would ask the board to turn in your vote to the refuse fund. The first thing I'd like to do is answer a question that Mr. Greg Miller and I had discussed at the last meeting, and that is, if you, if you look at the column that says as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and you look at that big number, one point six million, the question was, how, how is that so off? What was budgeted? And a big portion of the answer is that approximately sixty thousand dollars of that was twenty twenty three revenue that came in in January twenty twenty four. The board may recall that the twenty twenty three was the first year that we issued separate refuse bills that in a long time that weren't on the tax bills, and the board at that time gave the due date as December thirty first. There were many, many people who delayed payment until January of twenty twenty four. In addition to that, there was a miscalculation in terms of, we have a number of pre-existing non-conforming accounts that are multiples. For example, there is a complex of units, separate both homes, semis, and trailers owned by one particular entity off of Old Lancaster Pike, and that's a mix of about ten accounts. Some are singles, some are doubles. So there are a number of those accounts. We did a much more detailed account, accounting of the types of units and the numbers of units to hopefully give you a much better budgetary estimate this time. If you look at this revised budget, you can see what I'm proposing as the revenue for twenty twenty five. And I actually want to just cut to the quick. If you turn the page over, you'll, you'll see this. The board asked me to see if we could mitigate or soften the fee, and you can see the estimates for the reduction in the amount of carryover by taking the fee down from three hundred and three thirty, that single double, two ninety five, three twenty five, five dollars, and then two ninety, three twenty, and so forth. It really, the, the bottom line is how much carryover does the board want to have? Right now, it, at the, the, the top number there, you can see it's about five months. It, it really is what is the board comfortable with for the end of twenty twenty five? The contract in, in twenty twenty six is still the same carrier. The, the, the real, when push comes to shove, is going to be twenty twenty seven for this fund.
Do all these fully offset, leaving ambulance, all the three options?
No, the, if, if you, if you want to fully offset that, you're gonna cut substantially, and we can, if you wish, the board. It's about a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars a month worth of expenses, if you just take the expenses and divide it by twelve. You can certainly cut this down even more, but no, it doesn't fully make up for that.
Maybe because of too, too far, because in twenty seven, if the prices go up, it's gonna have a big rate increase.
That's correct. And in fact, from what I've been seeing and tracking in some of the regional news, that is what's happening. Allentown did theirs twice, and they had a substantial increase. Shillington is in the middle of a bid. They, they threw out all their initial bids, and they're opening, I believe, on October twenty ninth. And they're, they've been, we've been collection once a week for many years now. Shillington has been on collection twice a week, and one of the options in their bids to try to control costs is to go to once a week. So refuse fees are under a lot of pressure in a lot of places. Allentown had to bid theirs twice, and I think theirs is going up about forty percent next year, the rate to the property owner. So it's, it is a very tough thing right now, refuse rates, and they will continue to go up.
If we run over again next year, our whole will be filled, basically, right? I mean, we'll have that excess like, like we had this year running over next year again, potentially.
It, it's really all about the issue that you had referred to last meeting, and that is how much you need in reserve if the contractor skips town, goes belly up, doesn't perform, that kind of thing. And the way a lot of municipalities think of it as the, at six months of expenses in reserve. It doesn't have to be that. That's only a rule of thumb. Again, as I said last week, this is more of an art than a science. It's really what the board is comfortable with, as far as how much money you want in reserve.
Yeah, I guess the reason I bring that up is if you run over again, like another hundred thousand or so, you're gonna, you'll have that six months effectively. Well, I, I'd be okay with knocking it down to two ninety. I guess that's the lowest option.
Yes, well, you can certainly, you can do anything you want. I would not recommend going lower than that, because then I think you could end up with kind of the boomerang effect that Mr. Bill Miller had just mentioned. If you, if you take it too low, and then the bids come in really high next time, then there's gonna be a lot of difficulty in dealing with the public in that regard.
I understand. You think it's worth noting as a policy, fully, the township is not meant to be in the business of being a savings account for the people and that kind of thing. We don't want to get heckled should rates go up and we have to raise taxes, but we also shouldn't be proactively taking people's money to save it for them or for that. I don't think people appreciate the township doing that on their behalf, on their behalf.
Well, I don't think that's the case. I think the case would be doing the same for specifically expense. They're not saving it as an, as an account, like an actual money.
A specific expense to be paid for by the residents of the township.
Exactly. This thing would always be paying anyway.
Right. They could have the liquidity and apply it elsewhere in the meantime.
To, to, Mr. Daniel brings up a, a topic that was discussed about twenty years ago. We had a commissioner at the time, her name was Carol Foster, and she was very sensitive to this issue, and I, I think it's a a good issue to be sensitive about. At that time, we had over, at that time, twenty years ago, we had over a million dollars in the refuse fund, which was way too much. We're talking a, a contract of like three or four hundred thousand dollars a year. That was ridiculous amount of money, and our refuse fee has actually been lower than most of the surrounding municipalities because we've been using up that excess balance. You're absolutely right. You don't want to be the Coomer Township savings account. On the other hand, I also know that when you try to snag a performance bond because the, the contractor isn't performing, neither the contractor nor the bond agency want that to happen, and it's actually rather difficult to tap a bond. There, there's a timeline there, so you need cash in reserve in case you have to call the next day. And they're gonna charge a higher price, I guarantee it. If you have to, if you have to say to Mascaro, hey, can you come collect our trash? They'll say, how much are you gonna give us? You know, it, it, so you don't want to have too little in reserve in case the really bad stuff happens. Thank God that, that hasn't been the case. Another thing that, experience that we had is October twenty ninth, two thousand and eleven was the famous Halloween storm. Anyone who lived in this area will remember how all the roads were blocked with trees. Were you up at Holly Lane at that time? You probably could not get out of your house. And we actually had enough reserve in the fund that we had some special collections throughout the township to help everyone with their yard debris. It was, it was an amazing time here. Anyone who, who lived here at that time, that I call that the biggest disaster Coomer Township has ever experienced. It wasn't a flood. It was literally every road in the township was blocked with trees and debris. Welsh Road, there was a fire burning in the middle of Welsh Road from wires coming down. It was an incredible event. So that's the other thing that having some of a reserve can do is if the really bad stuff happens, you're able to, to deal with it. So it's really what the board is comfortable with in terms of reserve. You don't, you don't have to make any motions or adopt a fee tonight. You can think about it. Again, I'm cautious, caution against going too low.
What is our balance, what's the excess balance now?
The, the balance in the fund is as of September was one, one million dollars, right here on the sheet, one million sixteen thousand. And then, but remember, we're, the only revenue we're gonna be getting into the fund in the fourth quarter is whoever responds to the late notices we just sent out.
Just trying, what I'm trying to get at, if any insight lets me know. If you wanna try to determine like a quarter's worth of expense, or if you have to carry yourself for four, five, four, six months. In other words, bank is, you know, consistent, you know, you better, you definitely don't want to be a bank, that's BS. So on the other hand, you don't want to be down to nothing and be like some young fiddler that, oh God, what am I gonna do now? That doesn't go to be, so I'm not suggesting, okay, how are we gonna do it? Well, place it on expand, work, yeah, whatever.
Yeah, to your point, and I think, Bill, your point is well taken. Like, I agree with what Dave said. We don't want to just be running against the law, right? I probably understand, but I just wanted to make a point of policy comment. More than that, we would be cognizant.
We're definitely gonna have a gigantic increase in twenty seven. If it's already seven hundred some dollars in Allentown now, okay, two years, probably gonna be nine hundred dollars in Allentown. If it's nine hundred dollars in Allentown, it is probably gonna be at least five, six hundred dollars in the pool down.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying.
It's based on the reserve on like a six month expense.
I'm not suggesting you're wrong at all. I, I believe you one hundred percent. I, I guess, I'm just saying, I, I think maybe speaking to myself, just to be cognizant of not over committing ahead, but making decisions ahead of time before people have to plan for their budget. So, but your, your point is, is what?
Something I would suggest to the board also is if he would please think about the parameters of the billing. If we're going to actually lower the fee, I do not recommend doing two billings. I recommend one billing. Whether you go with the two ninety, three twenty, or if you wanna lower it even more, you know, again, I was cautioned against going too low, but the bottom line is I would recommend sticking with the one January billing. You can decide what you want as the due date. The, in twenty twenty four, the due date was March thirty first. It doesn't have to be March thirty first if you want to pull it out to April thirtieth or something, but I would only recommend two billings if you were raising the rate. And clearly, the discussion is lowering the rate. So that, that's my feedback on the, the billing cycle. You will have to, when you adopt the budget in December, you will have to not only set the mileage of the various funds that have mileage, but you will have to set the refuse rate and the parameters for what is considered a late refuse bill and what that late fee would be. Right now, we have ten percent. It doesn't have to be ten percent. And you have to set the SMP fee, which I, I recommend keeping the same, the fifty five dollars that we have now. And you'll have to adopt the sewer rate, actually, the sewer rate ordinance is gonna be adopted at your meeting on the twenty ninth. So those, those are the other types of issues that you have to set for the next budget.
You have to be careful on how many changes that we do, year to year. But I think it's a great idea, came up with my change into that yellow.
Yes.
Card. I think that's a great idea. You have to have some kind of consistency with the billing and changing that to try to emphasize the fact that it's different from the sewer bill, and maybe won't get displaced or misplaced as fast as it did this year. You know, I try, I try to limit the amount of changes, you know. If we're gonna change the amount, that's, that's one thing, but I wouldn't do too many changes. You're gonna get accustomed, all the residents accustomed that every January, you're gonna, you're gonna receive this bill. And now it's a different color, but hopefully they will remember that refuse was the yellow bill.
With regard to the changes to the actual mailer, I know we sort of talked about a couple of times, sort of marketing informational stuff, like either on the, on the calendar, on the mailer. Have we looked at possibly including, I know we had talked about at one point, maybe it was, adding a link, but or a web address to the township's website that says important dates, like coomer township dot com, such important dates, to your point, so that people are just made more easily accustomed to any changes that we go on, not that we should do a whole, uh, basket load of all of them.
Yeah, I think it definitely should be on the website.
And we're, we've already, as I stated at a previous meeting, the staff and I have already discussed taking a section of the annual refuse and recycling calendar, which is our best seller, which is also on the website in a couple of different pages, and taking a section of that with the same kind of message.
The more you put it out there, the more chances our people are gonna receive it, get it one way or another.
Thank you.
Just a quick, probably, I think, highlighted rates, the five month, three thirty, three thirty.
Yes.
The difference between those and the present day?
The, the present day rate is three hundred, three thirty.
Okay.
That's what it is. So that, if you leave it the same, you're gaining, potentially gaining a little bit. I, I would suggest that the difference between six fifty and six seventy eight is not a whole lot. It would take one bad leaf season to chew that up. The, then, the, the expenses are about a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars a month. So three months' worth of expenses is just over four hundred thousand dollars, a little less than four hundred and ten. So that, that shows you, it's not that much of a, of a decrease to, to go down. It, it's again, hitting that sweet spot between how much you want to carry over, potential rate increases in future years, all of that stuff. The, we're on the lower half, if you will, as comparing the local municipalities, we're on the lower side of the refuse.
I guess with regard to raising rates in future years, should there be a large rate increase? That's gonna be passed along to the residents irrespective of whether we graduate the transition, the additional surplus in the fund directly.
Yeah.
Eventually, like maybe twenty twenty seven, we have a half step to that to reflect the actual rate. But twenty twenty eight, you have to get, they're gonna assume the difference anyway.
Well, twenty twenty six, there is a slight increase in the contract, but it's the same contractor, so it's not a huge increase. It's about fifty thousand dollars, which is not huge. Twenty twenty seven will be a whole new contract, and I have no idea what, what the bids are gonna come in. Remember, yeah, I remember one of the residents who complained about the July late notice was stating, oh my gosh, the rate went up so much. The rate went up because we followed the law. We issued bids and we took the lowest bidder. And that's the same thing Allentown did, and it's the same thing Shillington has done. Sometimes the lowest bidder isn't low, depending on the project.
You're guilty, your point, the more carryover, the more, the more we minimize anything, the best thing on the down line, right?
In the short term, I think, you know, in the short term, I mean, because it would be a year, maybe two, that we would maximize the increase, it had risen, but the resident, whatever, but whatever is necessary in order to, to, to carry a safe balance year for year to establish. Yes, I agree. I, I guess, one quick comment, the, the, the reduced two ninety, three twenty rate.
Yes.
Six point four, fuzzy amount, that looks to be approximately a six month, four-ish.
Yeah.
Plus one thirty five, plus one thirty five, maybe a little short of the six month lead.
And remember, going into twenty twenty six, you're going to have more expense, so it's, it, it's not gonna be six months. It, because wages will have gone up, other costs will have gone up. It'll still cover several months, I believe, but it's not gonna be six, because the, the prices going in, in twenty twenty six are not static.
You're waiting four, three, five months?
Probably four.
Or this best, okay.
But for the twenty twenty six budget.
Yes.
We, we could marginally increase it maybe up to the middle number. Get that first payment early in the year, and then we would have that six point five line.
You could do it. Yes, you could do that.
I'm in favor personally of allowing it to look here, we'd be fine.
I'm in favor of that also.
Oh, mine.
Since, and I don't need a motion right now, but since three of the commissioners have voiced that, I'm going to prepare the resolution for December with that in mind. I need the board to think about, you don't need to articulate it at this moment, but I need the board to think about when you want the due date to be. Do you want it to remain March thirty first? And I need the board to think about, do you want the penalty to be the same? And right now, it's a ten percent penalty, and the date to go to collections. Remember, that's the firestorm that happened this year, the date to go to collections, which was on the bill, was July one. We sent a reminder notice July eleventh, and that's what erupted into a number of residents objecting to have gotten a reminder notice.
Really?
I was just gonna ask, how, how do we lead a hall? Or is that monthly?
Monthly.
It's monthly, okay. So time again, it feels like this doesn't really matter from that perspective, then, monthly?
Right. It's a very, it's very steady, and the dumping fees are around seven to eight thousand a month. There's usually a little peak at Christmas time. The peak is not as severe as it used to be. There used to be quite the peak at Christmas time. That has softened, less people using wrapping paper.
With regard to the fees, I'm curious about, again, policy question here. About the possibility of a graduated fee structure, where if you're within a month, you maybe pay three percent. Here, two months, six percent, three months, ten percent, something like that. I feel like there's a difference, my point is, there's a difference between somebody who's a daily and somebody who's getting six months of free service without paying the bill, and somebody maybe turned, went into the hospital or didn't get sick.
But they'll, they'll be rated.
No.
So what, what?
Now, if somebody sells, I will tell, if somebody sells and they get a fee served, then that's prosa, prorated between the buyer and seller.
Right.
Yeah.
We can do discounting. It just, it makes the math a little bit more complicated, but you can do it. I, I guess we do it on some of the other, or maybe it's not us, but who isn't? Somebody, I know a couple of my bills, in fact, pay by a certain date, I get a discount, and so on and so forth.
Tax bills, that's built into the tax law, and that's why when this fee was on the tax bills, it had the same structure, the two percent, ten percent. The sewer bills have a two and a half percent interest rate or penalty rate, and that's a quarterly bill. My suggestion, I'm, I'm actually not very favorable towards a graduated penalty because it's hard on the staff. People argue about, well, I nailed it on that day, but you got it on this day, and it, it will increase that kind of angst in, in collecting this type of fee. Certainly, the board can do it, will do what the board wants. I would suggest think carefully about that type of thing. If you want to soften the penalty from ten percent, have it less than ten percent, I think that's an idea that can definitely be considered.
Right now, excuse me, in twenty four, today's date, we have what, roughly six hundred and seventy accounts, like one?
We sent out seven hundred notices this week. Now, we believe, they, they were notices saying, if you do not pay by a certain date, I think November twenty second, they would be sent to collections. Well, we know that a number of people have received the letters already because we're beginning to get calls. These are the same people who got the July eleventh letter, and the same people who got the letter rescinding the late fee. Same people, many of them were issued the late fee, so this is about their fourth or fifth mailing in regards to the refuse bill.
It's like Andrew's point earlier, they got ten months for free. I didn't get ten months for free, but I paid my bill and debt, or.
Right. I guess my point there is, is there's a, to me, there's a difference in gravity of somebody at this point who's got ten months for free versus not somebody who paid a week later, the, the impact to the resident, their fellow resident is far less if they're ultimately late versus ten months later. They're costing the other residents more money by essentially freeloaded for ten months. So I, I, I don't know what the.
What you could potentially do is trigger late, to your point.
Yeah, so maybe it's one, a one month grace period late fee where it's two percent, and it passes a month, we go to twelve percent, whatever. Then we give people, without a doubt, without hammering them, with a ten percent fee. Ten percent fee is pretty high.
Or if we gave them all kinds of free bonds and stuff like that, and now you wanna have different late fees different times of the year.
Well, this is going forward, that's order under the dam.
Well, this is going forward, that's order under the dam, or this is going forward. You can't keep passing out, you know, refunds to people.
That's right. That's that's my point, because.
You don't want to put yourself in the same situation you set yourself up the first place for, I mean, come on, that's definition of sanity here.
I don't think that's what we're talking about now.
You you passed the refund thing, and we got, what, seventy three people actually took advantage of it, out of seven hundred?
Yeah, and then, look, ten percent of those people, it was a benefit too, I mean, I mean, for those that took advantage of it, and for those that weren't taking advantage of the township, unhappy. But I think going forward, my point is that somebody being a little late is not costing their fellow resident a ton of money versus somebody who's delinquent for ten months of time is freeloaded on their fellow resident.
Have I ever gotten a ticket from an officer, and it says a specific time you have to pay the fine? Oh, Mister, I I I'm a great citizen, I pay all my bills, but I'm an hour late. You're gonna cut you a rate?
No, it's an irrelevant point.
No, it's not an irrelevant point. Your point makes no sense to me, but you're entitled, you're admitted.
We're talking about people still paying the fee and giving people who are.
Saying of a bad example.
If you're left, I mean, it kind of funny, I let you talk, but it. What I'm saying is, we should be acting in the interests of all the residents of the township. And in my opinion, trying to save them money is acting in the interests of the residents of the township. And if somebody whose kid got sick or their parents went to the hospital or some emergency happened, and they were a couple days late, couldn't, or got, or maybe they just forgot. Like, we're, we shouldn't be in the business of punishing people. We are trying to incentivize a healthy economic, economically viable.
Well, that's a brilliant point, but I totally disagree. People have to have some sense of responsibility. And when other people in the community realize that we're giving away or giving, not away, but more leverage, more leverage, more leverage, more leverage to other individuals than the rest of us, that's a fa- false courtesy, I'm sorry.
What more leverage, though? I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. You're saying we analyze people just less for a lesser infraction and a lesser impact on their fellow resident.
And you said they go collections, you're correct.
The way the original dates were January, February through March was the flat rate. After April one was the penalty rate, which was ten per, plus ten percent. And then originally sending to collection was July one.
So, Andrew, have six months. I think I think that's that's a lot of time, personally, I think that's a lot of time.
That's just collections, though.
But they have six months to pay the bill before those collections. They have six months, but when do you get to late fee?
April one, that was how it was set up in twenty twenty four.
Well, we'll get it in January, it's what, two or three months?
Well, the late fee, that ended up being like thirty dollars, for each person.
Yeah, we're ten, ten percent, right. Um, if you do a five percent late fee on the two ninety, three twenty, the two ninety becomes three hundred and four dollars and fifty cents, and the, uh, three twenty becomes three hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's a five percent late.
What if perhaps it was a five percent fee until they went to collections and then it went to a ten percent fee?
When they, when they get to collections, it's a twenty-five percent. That's, that's what our collection order is.
I mean, for the township, that's.
We we could do that.
You'd have to tier it. If you wanted to go into later recapture based off the present value model, you could figure out what you would. Yeah, it it's, I mean, it's somewhat complicated, administratively, and maybe an issue for gene, I I don't know. Um, you wouldn't want to have to do it like monthly, but if he did it spaced out, it might not be that administrative burden, just a bit of a math problem. Um, you'd have to be willing to go more than ten percent if you want to take that model.
That's, that's sort of what I'm suggesting, it's not to say we don't penalize people, but for those who are having sufficiently low impact, not hammering them, but if somebody is willing to take it to collections and preload off of their fellow resident for six, eight, ten, however many months, that's a different story, and if we increase the 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 penalty there, I think that's fine. We think that's, you're accountable if you're acting to that point. What I'm talking about is people who, there's honest mistakes, there's emergencies that come up, but accounting for those two.
I speak out of both sides of my mouth and say those.
Then, I mean, I, that, it sounds nice, but then who's who's the one who's the one, but my God, here, King Solomon's gonna make determination of what what is or isn't a serious situation?
That's why it's not one down, it's like thirty days.
You know, the counterargument is, though, the people that can least afford it, that are probably paying the latest, you're gonna handle them with a hundred fee, probably.
If we can, I don't have any move on, I I it's, I felt like we might be worth.
Yeah, the board should think about what they're comfortable with. Um, when we, uh, adopt or advertise a budget, we'll be asking you for a more definitive decision. You could tier the fee, the late fee, at five percent in April, May, and June, and then July and August up to ten percent, and then after August, send to collections. I wouldn't want to delay the, uh, sending to collections too long because then we run into budget time and we run into, uh, the the crunch of all the other things that the staff has to do. But that's, that is an option.
And how much do we lose when we send it, what we send it to collections?
We don't.
Oh, we we get a hundred percent?
Correct. Uh, and that's, that's something that I remember, um, Mr. Greg Miller had had clarified when we looked at that ordinance in the meeting, that that we get a hundred percent, they get twenty-five percent on top of that. So if you did this five and ten, uh, so, uh, the three hundred and twenty dollar bill at a five percent penalty becomes three hundred and thirty-six. At a ten percent penalty, I'm taking it from the three twenty, I'm not taking it, I'm not tiering them. Uh, I'm not, uh, compounding them, excuse me, would become three fifty-two. And then if they end up going to collections, let's say in September, then that would be twenty-five percent on top of the three fifty-two. And of course, the idea is it's an incentive to pay instead of incurring all of those fees, that that's the whole idea. Right, that.
Twenty-five percent is a fee we pay to collections.
Right, they have, they get that when when they, uh, collect. And when it goes to collection, it goes on the oldest, when somebody makes a payment, it goes on the oldest debt first. Um, so if the board wants to consider this, um, the next time we just discuss it, uh, that would, a weight of farce this would be flat rate, January, February, March, five percent, April, May, June, ten percent, July, August, and send over to collections in September.
Well, I risked looking like a fool, I I I wanna retract, uh, the suggestion of the two, I think your your point is, like, really made me rethink this, because I I don't, my goal in suggesting this in the first place is to save people money. And I probably spoke out of turn saying people are freeloaded, because, yes, there are freeloaders, it's known, it's a known thing. But there's also, like, to your point, a lot of people who are struggling with paper bills. And I don't think we should be hammering those people sort of in an effort to punish them, but, so I would change what I would suggest to just lowering the fees across the board, maybe five percent flat fee. Um, and that's, that's what I would, I would do.
A five percent late fee?
Okay, that's my, your suggestion.
Uh, so we can draft the resolution for that, and then when it comes time to advertise the budget, the board can tell us if you really wanna keep it that way or not. Um, so thank you for all the discussion. The next item I'd like to talk about, if you would flip back in your books to the sewer fund. Um, the the, I actually, the first sheet in there has, Patty wrote, uh, updated on the bottom. The, or do I have an idea on the sewer?
Yeah.
Uh, you do not, here. That's true, that's true, the the police sheet doesn't need the sewer fund. Okay, he he still doesn't do the sewer fund. Um, here, I have one particular item I wish to discuss in regard to the sewer capital fund. The, at the upper left-hand corner of this, I know these sheets can be hard to read, but at the upper left-hand corner, it says eight oh nine, that's the sewer capital fund. Um, the eight oh nine fund has an encumbered balance of three point five million, that's the Angelica project money. So just keep that in mind whenever we're talking about this fund, that there's, there is an encumbrance. Um, the top number, sixty-one thousand two hundred, is based on, um, tapping fees with twenty EDUs. That it is possible that that will happen if, if, and I know there's a lot of ifs coming up. If the Greens Hill Warehouse Project is approved, and if they file permits to go to construction in twenty twenty-five. Uh, and and EDU tap-in fee is worth three thousand and sixty dollars and a couple of cents. And that's what's reflected here. Uh, there are other projects in the works that could also contribute to that, twenty EDUs. Uh, for instance, Taco Bell, uh, there are several other planning projects in progress. So that's what that sixty-one thousand two hundred is about. Interest, um, I would actually trust Mr. Greg Miller's opinion on interest more than my own because the forecasts say that the Fed's gonna reduce rates. When exactly they're gonna, maybe November, they're gonna do another one, I don't know. Um, so I freely admit to all of you that the interest estimates are very much an estimate, they're a guestimate. Um, in regard to the the number that, uh, I want to bring to your attention in in the revenue portion is the million dollars there. Um, we need to do two things, one, in this budget year, uh, and I hope I can get a motion tonight from the board, we need to transfer half a million dollars from the eight oh three fund, or authorize a transfer of half a million dollars from the eight oh three fund to the eight oh nine fund. And that is to to continue to pay for the Cedar Top project that is in progress. And there's still, um, uh, three-quarters of a million dollars of that project that need to be paid for. I don't think that contractor is going to get us all of that, uh, in applications for payment during this calendar year. They're very slow with their applications for payment. However, uh, I can guarantee you they'll have at least one before the end of the year.
That one million dollars is just a transfer from data, I think.
Correct, correct. We need a half a million dollars within this capital, within this calendar year, and we need another million next year. The reason for the additional million, and this is why you're raising the sewer rate, is to do the Ardmore project. Uh, that is the Montrose Manor Point and Connection One project, which is, I showed you an estimate at the last meeting, it's right there on the top of the folder, of one point six million dollars. Now, that is an estimate. Um, so we need to keep feeding money from the eight oh three fund into the eight oh nine fund to accomplish these projects. The goal of which is to reduce infiltration and inflow, which reduces cost to writing for treatment in the long run. Um, I will tell you, in regard to the Angelica project, we are going to apply for an LSA grant, there's a second LSA grant round coming up, the statewide grant round, which has a higher threshold than the one that just passed. Um, so at your meeting on the twenty ninth, we'll be asking for a resolution to apply for that project to the LSA grant round. Um, and that three point five million is what is encumbered so far for that project. That project overall will need more money, but that's a multi-year project, that's not going to be happening, uh, in in the immediate future. So, uh, bottom line, my point to the board is that, uh, I am requesting a motion to authorize the transfer of half a million dollars from the eight oh three fund to the eight oh nine fund during this calendar year, as a separate motion.
All the way from looks.
I would second.
And since we're not seating in our usual places, I hope I get this right, Mr. Bill Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Donnell?
Yes.
Mizrau?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, the, uh, the five hundred thousand dollar transfer is half of the million dollars, I feel like I'm just missing something obvious here.
No, no, you're not missing, it's very confusing. Hey, you're not missing something obvious. The half a million dollars, originally in this budget year, we had, um, uh, intended for a million-dollar transfer, and then the first three quarterly payments to the city of Reading were extremely high, especially the 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 payment in May was extremely high, so we.
The water, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and like, the.
Yes.
Obviously, the more rain we had, the more of a snowfall, and et cetera, et cetera, the more the more the cost.
So in the February payment, um, we had more snow this past winter than we had the previous two winters, so that was melt-off. The May payment was rain, was the timing and amount of rain, and that was almost a nine hundred thousand dollar bill, which is quite high. Um, and it, and then, uh, even the the next payment, the August payment, was higher than I would have liked to see. So that chewed up a lot of the reserve in the eight oh three fund. We haven't been able to make the transfers into the eight, eight oh nine fund that we really need to for these capital projects. And I brought this issue to the authority on October third, when they met, and they are the ones who recommended to the board to raise the sewer rate, um, so that we can have the capital money to accomplish these projects. So that that was the sequence of events.
So, the one million dollars, half a million, we did move to make the transfer.
That's just for this calendar year, I'm asking for another million for next calendar year. And, uh, we're hoping that especially, this this quarter has been rather dry. In fact, it's the kind of dry that I think I'm gonna, uh, look up the state fire commissioner and make sure they're not gonna declare a drought. Um, uh, so hopefully, we will also be accomplishing some savings from lack of eye and eye in this, in this next quarterly payment, which is in November. Um, so, uh, again, if the board has further questions about this proposed eight oh nine fund budget, I will be happy to answer them, otherwise, I don't need any more actions this evening on on this.
Probably conservative on your interest, by the way.
Oh, okay, good.
It's better to be conservative, not get way around.
Yes, thank you. Um, one of the, one of the things that, uh, changed, uh, ironically, after our last meeting, you and I had had a little interaction about CPI. We got from the actuary what he considers the appropriate CPI, and yes, it came down quite a bit. So, and and it's projected to go down even a little bit more by the end of December. Um, so we we talked about, uh, ambulance sewer refuse fire fund. Now, I will give the board and the audience the preview that I may, as, uh, and I have this on the agenda, I may ask for an executive session to talk to the board about, uh, bargaining unit issue concerning the new professional firefighter bargaining unit that we now have. Um, I'll, I'll try to go through this for the benefit of the public briefly before we decide whether you would like others to leave or whether you would like to go upstairs to talk about the executive session issue. This budget, I, with our current cohort of firefighters, I do not know how to construct a budget without increasing the mileage rate in the fire. And as you can see for this draft budget up in the upper left-hand corner, this is a half a mil increase. Our current mileage is one point four. This budget is based on one point nine. And, um, if you go to the punchline all the way to the, the very end, um, you can see that there's only two hundred and seven thousand five hundred projected to be carried over at the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, some of the things happening in this budget are, um, it, there's, um, there, you'll look at the, I, I wanted to point this out in particular. The interest rate line item is, looks kind of strange because when we disperse fire espros, we also have to, uh, that's an interest-bearing dispersment. We, we cannot withhold interest on that. So that, some of the interest from the fund went with those dispersments. And I think we had two or three of those dispersments this year. Um, there is no refund from the healthcare insurance. So for, for those boards, the board members who may not be aware, we have two healthcare plans in the township. The Teamsters are on the Teamsters Health and, Health, excuse me, Health and Welfare Fund. The rest of the employees are on, uh, a consortium, a municipal consortium. We usually refer to it as BENICON. BENICON is actually just the administrator of the fund. It's, uh, the other acronym is PIMIC, Pennsylvania Municipal, and it has about five other words. Um, and in that, we have historically, it's a self-insured fund. We have historically gotten refunds for low utilization. Unfortunately, two things have happened. One, um, the, the fund itself has gotten better at, um, targeting its, its expenses and its income. So the refunds have been getting smaller and smaller over the past couple of years as they, as they get their numbers, uh, more in line. However, we also had high utilization in this past year. There is no refund and a substantial rate increase. The BENICON health insurance has historically had either very minimal increases or even in a couple of year decreases. But this year, we have an increase in the rate of nineteen percent. Um, and you'll see that in the healthcare line item. Um.
With the increase up to one point nine mil, does that include a captain? Did it say this current year budget to hire a captain? We know that's not gonna get done this year. So is that passed over into twenty-five budget? And is there also a place, I think, give us, hire at least one more, uh, paid firefighter?
The, the one more paid firefighter, you can see that at, in the second section, and off to the right, it says twenty twenty-five Academy for One, um, in the notes. That, that is the gentleman who's currently in the military. And, uh, he, he'll, his salary is included only about half a year because he's not getting out of the military until like June.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that gentleman plus one more.
No, I did not include that. And if we wanna discuss personnel anymore, I, I wanna go into executive session.
Is the captain in this budget?
No.
Does it go to twenty-four budget?
No.
But we're not gonna hire a captain?
I'm not saying we're not gonna hire him, but I'm not talking about it outside of executive session because now we're dealing with a bargaining.
All right.
Um, and that's based on, I did have a conversation with the solicitor earlier today about, um, what I need to talk to you about. Um, in regard to the fire chief, that, uh, his wages are very different and lower because of his extended leave. Um, so I took that into account. The, um, I would like to draw your attention in the, to the second section, down towards the bottom of the second section, um, overtime wages. Something that has occurred is, you, the board is probably aware that we have very few fire volunteers as it is. The way our system has been working, uh, for quite a while are that the fire volunteer deputy chiefs have been covering the evenings and our career staff is covering daytime, six AM to six PM. Um, one of the deputy chiefs is not available. So the two captains are covering the evenings and essentially the overnights.
So are those wages, those overtime wages, in fact, is that more, are those two, is that more than for one hired full-time? Are you thinking those two individuals for hard time, more than would be person both?
Well, it's, if it's overtime, it's at a time and a half.
Let me answer that question. Yes.
Yeah, pretty much. Um, the, the question is having someone overnight who can get a fire truck out of the station. One of the, uh, deputy chiefs is still, um, functioning. So it, it, we are having the advantage of some of the time being covered. But until the end of the year, it's, it's going to be a very difficult situation in the evenings, uh, at night. Um, in regard to materials and supplies, you can see that, uh, in the uniforms and protective wear, that pop-up of twenty-nine thousand, almost thirty thousand dollars, that is in regard to the turnout here for all of the new firefighters. Turnout here costs about five to six thousand dollars a piece, and there are, uh, six of them. In regard to, uh, training, um, that also accounts for tuition to the fire academy and some additional training that is needed by the new firefighter cohort. Um, I'm not sure, uh, what else you would like to go over. Uh, there, another very high line item on the next page is hydrant rental. We actually have to pay the water companies for the use of hydrants that they own. And most of those are, uh, Schellington Municipal Authority.
Fire.
Yes.
Computer, that's the one, computer's on. Actually, they're pointing to, our computers was pointing to that one. Actual, they, the twenty-three is three hundred and thirty thousand estimated. Human age total, nine thirty thousand, that's eighty thousand, give or take, for computers in three years. I'm just wondering, is something more than physical hardware baked into the eighty thousand dollars in expanding computers over the last three years? Or is that just a lot of money to me for computers?
Well, we can certainly run the line item for you. I don't have all of that detail with me. However, there are a couple of things in there. Computers is not just hardware, it's software. And there is a transition to a new type of emergency reporting software, which was necessary to report for the state system neighbors. Um, the, uh, the other thing is though, when, uh, there is some hardware in there, there's no lie. There, there is some hardware in there. As you expand, the more people have more computers. Um, another thing that's in there though is, um, uh, data transfer from the old reporting system. Uh, but we can look up detailed for you. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, software being impacted in that would make it, make more sense to me. If we're just spending eighty thousand dollars for your hardware, I would say we should probably be wanting to give them a T shall.
No, I, I agree. Um, the board can let me know when you want to, uh, talk about personnel-related issues.
I just have, I'm trying, uh, well, I, yeah, the hydrant rental, I mean, that never even really occurred to me. Is that for the water also or just access?
That, that's for, we have to pay for use of those hydrants. And we pay it on a quarterly basis. It's, it's actually quite expensive. And it went up because every time we, you know, we have new hydrants on Schellington system because we expanded utilities and we pay for that. Supposedly that, that money goes towards maintenance of the water system, which includes the hydrants.
I ask a question, yes. I ask a question, uh, yes. Yeah, I do have a mic, mic with them. Just one, one item for the fire volunteer compensation for the volunteers. It's going to zero next year or not using any volunteers at all in twenty twenty-five?
I'm not sure what's happening. I'm, I'm not saying we have no volunteers. That is not true. Um, but I don't know exactly what is happening, uh, with the coordination of the career and the volunteer.
Okay, it's, uh, forty-one, forty-one, ten, zero, five, four, zero. It's going into seventy-one thousand dollars this year to zero in the budget for next year.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it's going to zero. I did not know what's in there. Um, because I don't know what the, the exact relationship is going to be between the career cohort and the volunteer cohort.
Well, if it's anything like this year, that would increase our deficit significantly, you know, from ninety-two up to a hundred and sixty, some thousand.
Should, Mrs. O'Leary's point, should we incur, let's just say, thirty-five thousand, half of what it was last year for the volunteer firefighters? We didn't budget that. How would that expense develop?
Oh, that would come out of fund downs. I agree with Mrs. O'Leary that there should be a number in there. I, but it's something I need to talk to the board about.
To check my understanding, Jean, the, the increase in wages, you said that's purely based off of the, the new arrangement, that's not hiring new people? Or do I have that incorrect?
No, the, the wages, you're looking at the four one one zero, one three two, the almost eight hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is just taking their current wage rates, the current wage rate schedule that is set up. Assuming all of the people in the academy graduate, they get a bump up when they graduate from the academy. It's assuming they all graduate from the academy and that they're all full-time throughout the year. Plus half the year of the, the gentleman who's in the military, half the year him being in the academy.
Something, that's what you're saying, basically. That's, that was all part of the staff, right? I mean, I'm just kind of rehashing here, I know, but.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Then, so the, the idea that has been presented, um, by the firefighters is to go to four platoons at, at, um, three individuals per platoon. That gives an officer and two individuals in a truck to get a truck out when there's a call. I would really like to talk to the board in executive session.
I agree. Are we ready for an executive session?
Yes, we're ready.
All right, let's, let's thumbs up for the executive session.
Does it talk about, are you on, are we just talking about it here or no?
Uh, yeah, I think that was.
Okay, what I mentioned to Jean, um, and it's, it's kind of painful to say this, but I, I, I'm worried that we're not high enough and that we should boost it up. But do it in a manner that, um, I'm trying to speak in legalese right now and the words aren't coming to me. Um, do it in a, in a way that's not gonna get us in trouble. And, and Jean can figure out, be the maestro on that.
Um, for the public's application, we had an executive session talking about a collective bargaining issue. And that was the only topic. Um, it, on the agenda, there is a section for public comment. Did you wanna take that at this time? Sure, would anybody like to make a public comment?
What was Greg referencing? Yeah. I was not, no.
Uh, Mr. Miller was referencing the, the fact that the, from, the current draft of the fire fund budget is enough for, uh, what we have going on now with no cost increases of any kind, uh, taken into account for twenty twenty-five. So he would like me to take another look at that.
That's, I want to make sure, no, it's.
Correct.
Could you tell us how much we, how many appointments this is gonna support, how many full-time firefighters?
Thirteen.
And now with twenty-four seven hundred, Stan?
Correct.
One, one of the things that we talked about is the model is moving away from volunteers to a full-time staff. And this effectively is that move. So it's gonna look like a, a giant increase, which it is. There, there's no hiding that. But it's, it's fully staffing a new full-time staff for the fire department.
But you're, but you're really providing the necessary buffer coverage.
Correct, since we're not getting the volunteers, I hate that. It will be a one-time thing. This just becomes a new law.
Thank you for all the discussion. And your next meeting, which is your fifth Tuesday meeting on the twenty-ninth, there will be some items of regular business. We have, um, some items that are, need to be taken care of, such as the resolution I mentioned earlier for applying for a grant. Um, there will also be at least part of the general fund. I know the chief of police is ready and raring to go. And that, that sounds good to discuss the general fund. Uh, if it is possible, I'll, uh, have the rest of it. Um, but, uh, for sure, I wanna do the police budget at that time. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.